This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to, uh... Welcome to tonight's meeting. I'd like to call the October 12, 2023 Regular Meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30. I have a motion to approve the September 14, 2023 Board of Education Regular Minute... Uh, Regular Meeting Minutes. Meeting Minutes. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the September 14, 2023 Special Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Need approval for that. May I have a motion to approve those education special meeting minutes? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Thank you. Uh, this time we're gonna move on to public comment. I'm sorry. Because we have an app... We had a small added agenda item because we didn't have the student reps, uh, situated before the agenda was approved, but we're gonna let them speak tonight, and I'm gonna introduce the both of them. Oh, Sarah's not here, but, um, for the junior rep, we have Joe Salmini Jr. Um, our senior rep is gonna be Sarah McCarthy. They were... They were both chosen out of several applicants, uh, for the position, and tonight's their first night. Joe, the way we usually run it is we have, uh, the students do the report, and after the report, you're free to go. You don't have to stay for the whole... The whole meeting.
Unless you really...
Unless you... Unless you wanna walk, if you're walking home. Alright, so Joe, please, go ahead and give us your, uh, report.
Um, yeah, my name's Joseph Michael Salmini Jr. I'm a junior at the high school. I play on the soccer team and the track team, and some current things happening in the junior classes. There's currently a fundraiser for the Lyman Hall cookie dough and pies. You can buy those up until October 20th, and they come on November 14th. Also, PSATs were this Wednesday, and this is the first time that the PSATs were digital. They're no longer on paper, and everything was digital now, and that happened on Wednesday of this week. Also, midpoint of the marking period happened about a week ago. Everything seems to be going well. Um, open house at NHHS was held on September 19th, and it was a positive event. Parent conference nights are on November 1st and 6th by appointment. And recently, English teacher Peter Sagnella published a book called Coming to Terms with Kethexis Northwest Press, and he signed copies for the school library. And on October 18th, in the library, there's during second period in engineering and manufacturing companies like... debut where students can sign up to go to the library and learn about possible careers in the engineering field and talk to people that are in current companies and have current jobs at those companies.
Awesome. All set?
Yep.
Good job.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much. You, uh, next month, for sure. Okay, at this... This point, I'd like to do a public comment of non-agenda items. So if you'd like to speak, just come on up, give your name or address, and...
Hi, Hannah, my aunt Sandra. Share it with me, 'cause my printer wasn't working, so...
No problem.
I had to bring my laptop. And please, if I go over a little bit, I'm sorry. Um, I'm here tonight with a more formal approach to my norm of speaking off the cuff, because this is so important to me. Um, I'm here to address the fundamental parental right. The parental right to opt one child out of educational materials and tests that we as parents deem unsuitable or feel goes against our child's best interests. On August 23rd, I sent a formal opt-out request form via email to my children's principals and Patrick. I asked for their acknowledgement of receipt, and the principal did so the very next day. And I heard back from Patrick via a mailed letter to my home, which was dated September 22nd, and I imagine that counsel was sought for a reply as to why it came a month later. In it, Patrick acknowledged receipt of my request for opting my children out of participating in a number of school instruction programs and/or activities. However, one of my opt-out requests for standardized testing was basically refused. I will read my request and then the subsequent response from Patrick, so... My request stated...
And, Anna, I... I don't mean to interrupt you. It's like a fan on, it's really hard to hear. If you could just speak a little louder.
Speak louder?
Yeah.
I thought I was being too loud.
Thank you so much.
I think it's a mic for the TV. My, uh, opt-out notice said, "My child is not to take any taste tests that will be graded or evaluated via computer or any source outside of his teacher who administers it. This includes SBAAC assessments." I am already aware that the Elementary and Secondary Education Act does not allow parents to exempt their children from taking the state assessments. However, the ESEA also does not disallow it, nor do Connecticut general statutes. I'm therefore perfectly within my legal rights to refuse to allow my child to take these tests. Please be sure to provide an area where my child can read or do other work that the teacher provides during the testing time. And then the response I received. Regarding standardized instruction. Connecticut state law requires a public school... Requires... I'm sorry. State law requires public school students enrolled in particular grades to take mastery examinations in reading, writing, mathematics, and science as applicable to their grade level during the regular school day. There is no statutory right for parents or guardians or students to opt out of taking the SBAAC exam or other state mandated testing. Similarly, there is no obligation for school districts to provide an alternative assignment during the period when such tests are administered. The district will be administering standardized testing, including the SBAAC exams, in accordance with state law and district practice. While the district cannot affirmatively guarantee that your child would not be asked to sit for any standardized examination, we would be happy to discuss this matter further with you. It's an undeniable truth that parents know their children better than anyone else. We witness their growth, their capabilities, their struggles on a daily basis. We understand their individual needs, strengths, and weaknesses in ways that no standardized test or assessment can truly measure. As was stated in my opt-out request, Connecticut state law, as reflected in Section 10-14N, acknowledges the requirement for schools to administer standardized tests. However, it does not explicitly address the right of parents to opt their children out of these assessments. This leaves room for interpretation and local Board of Ed policy development. I firmly believe that refusing a parent the right to opt their child out of standardized testing or anything else for that matter they find doesn't suit their child's best interest is fundamentally wrong. It goes against the principles of parental involvement in education and the belief that we as parents should be active partners in our children's education. The controversy surrounding standardized testing is not new, and it is not without merit. Educators across the nation, including many in our own district, have expressed their concerns. The pressure to teach to the test diminishes classroom time for creative thinking and holistic education. It places stress on the children and teachers alike. We need to recognize that the purpose of education is not to mold our children into test-taking machines, but to foster well-rounded, critical thinkers. If you fear the threat from the state to comply with the Every Student Succeed Act's requirements to test 95% of each school's students or risk loss of funding, this is an empty threat. There is no case that I could find where the government has taken away funding for not having the 95%. So in conclusion, I want to urge the board to reconsider its stance on the right of parents to opt their children out of standardized testing and provide an opt-out policy in which parents are allowed to make decisions on their children's behalf. Or even better, an opt-in policy for parents and children. I hope we can work together to create district policies where parents are viewed as partners. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dorothy Logan, 2065 Hartford Turnpike. First of all, I want to thank you all for your... the time and service to our community on behalf of our children. The reason I'm here tonight is that, um, just last month, again, school... The beginning of school was disruptive because of the weather. Uh, and in the elementary schools, they were closed early because of heat concerns. Again, this is not the first time. This happened regularly in 2017, 2018, 2019. It went under the same exact conditions. It was after... Right after Labor Day. And I... I know there was... It's disruptive for students, for teachers, for parents. And I'm just hoping there's a lot of talk, a lot of discussion about the condition, not only in North Haven buildings, but in Connecticut. And I'm just hoping that, um, there's some movement forward as far as talking about, um, updating our schools HVAC-wise. I know four years ago, uh, $15,000 was spent on the Centric, uh, report, where they went through all the... They walked through the buildings and, uh, building by building and talked about what needed to be done. But my main concern is, I know this is a thought, it was about $4 million to update everything. And, uh, I... I believe it's not only a school problem or a concern, but a town, uh, community concern. And I know that the, uh, this issue's been kicked down the road many, many times, many years. And, you know, come next May or June, the buildings are not gonna be fully air-conditioned. It's not... Nothing happens that quickly. I do want to talk about, um, some low-cost, no-cost ways to make things a little bit more comfortable in the elementary schools. And I speak because I taught for 25 years in all the elementary schools and the then-middle school that were not air-conditioned, so I'm very familiar with the buildings. Um, one of the things, and again, it came up in 2019, is that the buildings retain heat, and I don't understand why the ovens for hot lunches have to be on. Uh, I'm really concerned about, uh, just for that week. Uh, I'm very concerned about the cafeteria staff, because they're in a hot building, in a back room with, I think, just simply, uh, a fan going. And I've... I've seen the ladies, and they don't always look so good, uh, by the end of the, um... of the shift. And so if we're thinking about, uh, a protocol for what we do, uh, when the schools are closing early, I... I would think that would be one possible thing to do. The second thing, which astonished me and kind of worries me, is I never realized that North Haven had become a BYOF district, and that's Bring Your Own Fan. And I've heard... It came up at a... On the Board of Ed meeting last year, uh, last month, about teachers requesting fans, bringing fans in from odd lots, from home, from garage sales. And... And I support the teachers, because they wanna have a room that's very comfortable. But in the past, PTAs were donating... Were buying fans for the rooms. Uh, I know that, um, the pedal steel fans, uh, that are black, uh, are heavy-duty, and they're safe. And I'm hoping when you're discussing the budget, you may wanna think about buying fans for the rooms. Let's see. That was the second thing. Also, and we all know in the buildings that... At Ridge Road, the T-wing heats up incredibly fast. You know, at Monowees, it's, uh, it's the rooms that face the east and the morning sun, um, going up in the upper grade wing. And I know the teachers that are fortunate enough to be in air-conditioning are very generous in offering their rooms throughout the day, throughout the morning. But has anybody been thinking about a protocol where you know there's gonna be hot weather, especially on the second and third day when the rooms are really heated up, that there's, you know, the T-wing, the teachers, they know there's someplace they can go at a certain time? It's almost, you know, like a schedule, so that, um, it's just not a sign up as you... as you want. It's... It's really a... Especially at the beginning year, because, uh, teachers are really planning, well, as you know, um, to set routines. So if you had a plan, you know, this... This springtime, that the teachers know, okay, in the T-wing, you're gonna go here, here, and there at a certain time, and go back to the room or whatever. And the teachers are very capable and work well together to set a schedule up. And then the last thing is ESY at Green Acres School. I know that there was, uh, the last day was canceled because of heat. I under... And I... Actually, I support the teachers for bringing the fans. And I can understand why the, uh, early childhood teachers wanna stay in their rooms. But Green Acres has rooms that are air-conditioned, the library and the music room that can be used. But it doesn't include everybody. Some... Not everybody gets to be in air-conditioning for the morning. So, you know, if the early childhood were in their rooms, and K12 were in the library, the music room, there'd be enough space. But did you think of sending... And I know this is... It'll cost a little bit money, because you'd have to run another bus, but maybe grades three, four, and five go to the middle school or wherever the enrichment program is. Again, it would be tricky, uh, to split up the group. But I know for s... I guess I've had staff tell me that they really don't wanna work summer school because of the heat conditions. And I think it's better if we have, uh, students in air-conditioning. Staff know they're gonna be comfortable, and maybe you wouldn't have to go outside to get, um, staff for, um, summer school. So, I mean, that's...
Thanks, Doc.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Hi, folks. Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane. So this week, with the passage of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I just wanna start my commenting by acknowledging that Indigenous people, once inhabited land we now call Connecticut and North Haven, including our schools, the places we live, and the places we work. These were nations with their own unique, complex, and intricate cultures, languages, forms of governance, and ways of life. In particular, it's important to acknowledge the Quinipiac people, who were the original people who had homes, educated their children, and worked the land here. They were relocated from a wide area that included North Haven and other surrounding towns to the First American Reservation, a form of de facto racial segregation, which limited their freedoms and their access to resources. The land that they'd been promised by the colonizers rapidly diminished over the next century to the point where their numbers had dwindled from the thousands to the tens. The rest either dead from disease or combat, or resettled into other tribes who hadn't made deals with Europeans or fared slightly better in theirs. When we spoke a few years ago about changing the school mascot, many spoke in favor. Some spoke against, but there was a general consensus about a desire to make sure Indigenous and Native culture was being honored in some way. I'd like to respectfully re-raise that desire. I think the school could benefit from some sort of plaque or statue or other honorarium, perhaps made in conjunction with the local universities and the tribes who were so generous to offer us their counsel during the mascot debate to ensure that whatever we would come up with is respectful and historically accurate. There's another tangential, though not necessarily unrelated, topic that I want to speak to next. In the time since this board met last month, the town of North Haven was stung for the second time by a known hate group with terroristic tendencies who put signs all over our town, including one right outside the sports field that serves as an entranceway to the middle school. Nearby towns were also targeted as well. A former Board of Education member also received a threatening letter in her mailbox that there will be hell to had, hell to be had, if certain candidates made it to the board and allowed certain books to be taught in classrooms. Someone also made a threat to one of our elementary school principals on an open house day. And on the day when the New Haven Pride Center was supposed to hold its annual pride celebration, downtown New Haven came to a grinding hall because of a bomb threat. I bring all this up as a means of emphasizing that the work of DEIB in our community remains not only essential, but urgent to counteract the forces pushing it back against this. This is why we need to have DEIB as a standing item at these meetings. This is why the middle school needs a No Place For Hate Club and why the schools could benefit from a program like The Path To Belong. The consistent theme behind the hostile examples that I've cited is the cowardice of the perpetrators, who all committed their acts anonymously. They're no... They know their views are marginal and unpopular, and that's why they operate in the shadows. But our children deserve better. They deserve to be able to live in the light as the fullest versions of themselves, without fear of harassment or social pressure to change, particularly from the ostensible adults within their orbit, who may seek to shield them from the cultural influences that may persuade them to choose empathy, solidarity, love, and community over passing down generational hates. I hope that we can continue to be strong to withstand these bad faith pressures, which will use any excuse to achieve their ends of erasing the beautiful diversity of our student body, silencing the injustices that they face in their daily lives, and making our schools and our homes places governed by fear. We are a strong community, and I know that we can stand up and help those who need our assistance. And sort of on that note, my last topic. I received an email recently that basically confirmed that the supplemental mental health services being offered by our school was indeed going to switch from a free service to one that will be charged to private insurance with its subsequent deductibles, copays, bureaucracy, and the like. And I'd like to strongly encourage that we take a deep look into our options to keep these essential services free. They've made a world of our difference in my children's lives, and I'm sure others as well. And I know, for instance, that there was an omnibus bill passed last year in the Connecticut Legislature that had all sorts of grants towards this end of making sure that the schools had adequate mental health services. Now, we're far from the end of the difficulties that led to the passage of that, such as the COVID crisis, not to mention some of the mental health challenges that come along with things that I've mentioned, uh, tonight. Uh, and no child deserves to go without services because of an inability to pay private insurance companies. While other more well-off students may continue to receive their services uninterrupted, this is the definition of an inequitable educational experience. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Some of you may know me, but I would imagine most of you do not. Let me introduce myself. My name is Jason Kyle. I'm a sales manager for a company. I work with, uh, multiple locations throughout New England. Essentially, what I'm saying is I'm a leader at the company I work for. My wife and I moved... Can you give us your address, please? Yes, 16 Barnett Drive. Thank you. Sorry. I wrote it down. My wife and I moved to North Haven from New Haven back in 2014. My wife's a school teacher in New Haven. Uh, she's on her 20th year. We've got two sons in North Haven school system. One's 11 in middle school, and the other one's in Clintonville. He'll be eight at the end of the month. I'd like to, uh, think that my wife and I are leaders in our community, just like we're leaders at our profession. We assist our neighbors any way we can and encourage my sons to do the same as well. I'm on the Clean Energy Task Force for North Haven. I've been volunteering as a coach for my younger son's baseball team for a few seasons, which is where I was tonight. And just in case anybody wants to know, the North Haven Fall Ball 10U Little League Team is 5-0. I also volunteer, um, to assist my older son's sixth-grade football team whenever I can and any way I can. But to be honest, I'm more of a baseball guy than a football guy, so I do what I can. But I... I love watching them play. So now that you know a little bit about me, I'd like to address something I understand has been a topic of much conversation with the Board of Education for some time now. I also understand that what I'm about to say, most of you are already aware of. I bring no new light to this conversation. Instead, I bring a new voice. The M&amp;J Bus Company has struggled to provide acceptable transportation services for many years. They continue to blame the national bus driver shortage. The driver shortage is definitely a problem, but all companies are facing this issue and managing it differently. More effectively, in fact. Many parents in town have the perception this bus company is not focused on attracting and retaining drivers. Further, it is more evident that the training of the driver's staff to better manage and operate the buses, as well as the bus environment, has been ineffective. I'm a sales guy, so perception is reality. That's what I tell my people. And that's the perception that I have. So that's the reality. Without enough drivers, bus routes are being combined, and our good drivers are being worked to the max. And they're stressed out, too. The buses are overcrowded. The routes are way too long. Some children are on the bus for over an hour. Buses and vans are not showing up on time at stops. They're not showing up at schools on time at arrival or dismissal. And all of this is affecting people's jobs, childcare arrangements. But who really cares about those people? It's the kids, right? The kids are the ones who are being more affected about it than anything. Regardless of the driver shortage, again, perception, M&amp;J Bus Company is perceived in much of the, uh, the community's eyes as not providing the level of service the children and parents of this town need and expect them to provide. My family in particular moved to North Haven because we knew the school system was better than the one we lived in back in 2014 and before. When parents call M&amp;J Bus Company with concerns, they're met with short answers, rude responses from the bus company. Communication is lacking when the company knows delays are expected. We, as taxpayers, pay this company millions of dollars, and they need to be constantly supervised and managed, more like micromanaged, by our superintendent. I would only assume, and I'm in the majority, when I say our superintendent should probably be doing something other than that. Moreover, M&amp;J Bus Company's perceived incompetence in the hiring and training of drivers has led to some very serious safety issues. From pulling away from the stop prior to students getting a seat, to as serious as children being left alone, sleeping on a bus at the end of a route. M&amp;J Bus Company has had numerous opportunities to make changes. They come up with new policies, new procedures, and they say they will follow, and they don't seem to. They changed management in an effort to improve operations, yet it has not improved significantly enough. M&amp;J Bus Company's contract with North Haven is for the rest of this school year, as well as the 2024, 2025 school year. But the parents of this town feel as though enough is enough. Our children deserve a safe and timely trip back and forth to school. Families deserve better communication, and our children deserve better. I started an online petition on Saturday. And admittedly, I'm no social maven, you know, on the media circuit, alright? I'm... I'm not... Never on Facebook. I thought I deleted it, actually, and apparently I didn't, but whatever. I didn't walk door-to-door and ask for signatures. I posted it a few times on a one-community page that I used to be a part of, that allowed me to post it. And within a couple of days, I got 130 signatures. And I shouldn't say "I," I should say "we," right? Because it's about us. In my mind, this number is light. There have been several conversations with parents of school-aged children who have told me their kids don't even ride the bus because they gave up on dealing with the issues from M&amp;J Bus Company's service and all the issues mentioned. There have been a few that have told me they can't sign it for fear of retaliation. There's also a group of people that... There's also a group of people that would just rather leave it alone because they feel if the Board of Education and the town of North Haven has let this go on for so long, that nothing will change and that I am just wasting my time. While I refuse to accept that status quo, I refuse to believe nothing can be done, and I truly feel action can be taken. Action. So that's a dynamic word. I understand action has been taken in some regards to this situation, and I acknowledge this. I think, I thank you, the Board of Education, for the action so far, but at this point, I think we need to do more. I understand it will be difficult. Change always is. But if it is needed change, if it is the right change, it'll be worth it. I also understand when a contract is broken or even when bus providers change in town, it's messy. But I also know in most cases, the change is mostly the equipment, the management, and sometimes the location. Other than that, most bus drivers and the technicians that work on them are offered positions with the new incoming company. My problem is not with the bus drivers. They do what they can. I said that in the beginning. They're overworked. They're probably underpaid, but I don't know that. They're doing their best. They need better training. They need better leadership. They need better management. They need a better company that they can work for. The problem is with everything that I just said, and it's lacking in M&amp;J Bus's schoolyard today. Thank you for your time and understanding. Again, my name is Jason Kyle, and I'm a resident of North Haven. And my kids have taken the school bus since they started in kindergarten, both of them. And they do today, and they will tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments on that. The first one, aside from the board doing what we can right now, and when we are on, we are on M&amp;J more than maybe is transparently seen, is the word retaliation that we use for anybody who's afraid to sign that petition. I don't know where they think the retaliation is coming from. That's up to each individual. But it would not come from the board. So, I mean, I just want to make that very clear, that if there's anything that the public would like to say about M&amp;J, that's fine. That's why I allow people to come up here and say whatever they want. I give them past five minutes. They can talk about whatever they like about the bus company. And we are, you know, we are behind the parents and the students when it comes to this. You know, I could sit here and tell you it's a very complex issue. It is. I know that's not what everybody wants to hear, and there's nothing that can happen in a minute. We are actively engaged in conversation about M&amp;J right now. That's all I can really say about it. But it is not something that is going by the wayside. It is something that is dealt with weekly, at least between myself and Patrick and myself and the board members. So it is an ongoing issue that we are trying to deal with in the best way possible. We know change is what people want, and we're trying to get there.
Hello, my name is April Wazneski. I am a driver at M&amp;J Bus. I am here on behalf of myself and my fellow bus drivers. We have noticed and we are aware of the petition, and we notice that there's forums that people are on against M&amp;J Bus. We understand that the concerns are the late arrivals to school and the late arrivals home, and that the buses are crowded, and we have double runs. Now, I am also aware that the Board of Education designs the runs. And each run has every stop at each individual house. If the individual houses were maybe combined as runs or as stops, we might be able to make it more in a timely manner. I'm not sure why the stops are at each individual house. But I mean, it would also bring communities together. I mean, neighbors knowing neighbors. I've been a bus driver for seven years. And the seven years, there's been one incident, a totally unfortunate incident, where one student was left on the bus. And I believe that change is required at M&amp;J as well, and we're working on that. So on behalf of all the bus drivers, we need your support and the parent's support as well as everything else, because it makes our job a lot harder. We don't, we take it personally when we are bashed on forums, and it's just, it's really-
Just hang on for one second. I've been conducting these meetings for fourteen months as the chair. Not one time ever have I heard a bashing of a bus driver as an individual.
Okay.
Never. I have board members on here that almost monthly talk about how good the bus drivers are. So if we're going to talk about the bus company and shortcomings or what we think are shortcomings, let's not talk about how the public is bashing bus drivers, because that is untrue.
Okay. Let me rephrase that. We take it personally because we feel it's against us. So I will rephrase that. And it just becomes, makes our job a lot harder and a lot more stressful, knowing that people are upset with the job that we are trying our best to do. We have anywhere between forty to sixty students on a bus at a time. We have to watch the roads. We have to make sure that the children are being safe in their seats at all times. And it's, we have to stop the bus if the children are a distraction, which takes more time. We can't drive a bus if there's distractions.
We're not here to tell you that it's an easy job.
I understand. I'm just here-
No one says it's an easy job, and I understand you're frustrated. You know, this isn't really, this is a forum not for what we're doing right here, which is to debate as a representative of the bus company. That's under a different thing that we do here, like when we invite people in to talk about it. So, one, I'm gonna have to end this part of the conversation. Two, we know it's difficult. We do. We're not saying it's not. We have representatives come here. It is the representatives from M&amp;J's job to come here and give suggestions. If they want to know why houses are separate routes, then he should be asking us, why are houses separate routes? He did not. That is not our job to go to him and say, hey, you know what? We can fix this. Let's do this. That's not our job. Our job was to ask the companies to bid on pickup and delivery. He did. He was chosen. If he wants to make a change or has questions about why and how, that's up to him to ask, not us to ask him.
That was just, that was me. That was, nobody else asked.
Well, that's why it's a different forum, and we have these kind of conversations.
And I apologize for that.
So I thank you for your time. I do.
So, before I, I'm Michelle Liomo, First Court. Before I say what I was, have planned to say here, I want to address what just happened because it pains me that drivers are taking this personally. This is absolutely 1,000% not about drivers. I have said in everything that I've said that our drivers are amazing. The good drivers that we have are amazing. We need more of those drivers. Those drivers need better pay. They need shorter routes. They need less kids on their bus. These are all things that their management should be doing for them. So if we had more amazing drivers, like the one who just spoke here, then we wouldn't be in this situation.
Agreed, and the board agrees that we don't have, we don't have a driver problem.
Right. Well, we have a driver shortage problem, which everybody has.
A driver problem in terms of who we have driving.
So, that being said, again, I want to praise all of the wonderful drivers because they are, they absolutely deserve better, just like our children deserve better and just like our parents of this town deserve better. So, that being said, you also just heard from someone here tonight, and you now know that I am not the only person in town who's upset with the way that transportation is going. We were here a month ago and heard many parents express their concerns while Mr. Hipsher talked about what they are going to do to try and make things better. For those that don't know, Mr. Hipsher was also here last February and said very similar things to what he said in September. But things did not get better back then, and they haven't gotten better in the past four weeks. Although he did sit here and very proudly proclaim that things had gotten better, quote, "Things had gotten better every day for the past seven days." He said that when him and Mr. Stirk had their weekly meetings, the list of issues continues to decrease. But in my opinion, that was a clever spin on how things are going. Because if you get twenty on a test this week, and then next week you get a forty, you've still, you've done twice as good as what you did, but you've still gotten an F on your test. If you have a list of ten issues to discuss at a weekly meeting this week, and you only have eight things next week, that's 20% less things to talk about, but that's still enough to need a weekly meeting with the superintendent, and it's still eighteen issues over the past two weeks to discuss. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to read my email with the many things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Instead of repeating what I've already said to you in email, I wanted to focus tonight on some numbers. I spent the majority of the past few days reading through our 26-page bus contract and analyzing the bus routes that are posted on the district's website. Here are some of the things that I found. According to the website, here are the combined routes, because this was a little bit unclear when it was asked of Mr. Hipsher last meeting. Clintonville, golden white AM and PM, and blue and yellow PM. Green Acres, red and brown, purple and orange, both AM and PM. Ridge Road, blue and green, AM and PM. Monowice, blue and orange, gold and aqua, white and pink, AM and PM. White and pink, I personally know, has been combined for over a year because it's the reason my son was on a van when he was left on it. He gets carsick after about forty minutes, and it was requested that he temporarily go on a van until they had enough drivers so he could go back on the bus. And that has yet to happen. That route is still combined. Middle school and high school, six and twenty-four, ten and twelve, thirteen and twenty-five, seven, nine, and eighteen are all together, all AM and PM. That's twenty-seven routes that are combined, which means that we are likely short at least twelve drivers. This does not account for the drivers needed for vans and mini-buses, which I have also heard are combined on many days and stuffed like sardines or other types of transportation like out-of-district buses, like my daughter's bus to Lyman Hall, because she's an out-of-district student. Most of these combined routes are listed as close to an hour from first stop to last, and that would be with no sorts of delays if they are, if they are running on time. Besides for those routes listed as combined, there are other buses that have routes close to over an hour as they are listed on the website. I heard from parents who have had, who have kids on Ridge Purple with kindergartners on the bus for over an hour every day. I have heard from elementary and middle school parents whose kids are arriving to school over twenty minutes late each day. I have heard from parents on these combined routes who say that listed times are not accurate because their kids are coming home later than they are supposed to. They are choosing to not use the bus because of how this affects their children. Kids are coming home cranky and dysregulated. They are late to their after-school sports and activities. As we have heard before, parents are having trouble with jobs and childcare. Interestingly, our transportation contract states that no child will be on the bus for over an hour. It also states that children should not be picked up earlier than 6:45 in the morning. Most middle and high school runs start before then. One I saw was as early as 6:08. It also states that kids will be dropped off at least five minutes before the start of their school day, but no more than thirty minutes before the start of the day. As you heard, there were many buses frequently late to schools. And I saw one high school bus getting kids to school at 6:47, which is forty-three minutes before the day starts. The contract also says that M&amp;J is to have four spare drivers available at all times to cover when needed. I wanted to, I already reiterated, this is about the drivers. So, again, I'm here to just say, not about the drivers. Love our wonderful drivers. Love my morning driver. But the stress that this is causing for parents in the town, for children coming off the bus, which is more important, people choosing not to take the bus when we pay, the taxpayers pay all of this money for the service that this company bid to say, yes, we can do this job. They have not proven that they can do this job, and it's been for a very long time. So I know that there's a lot of things going on. I know that you are giving attention to this. But I just wanted to say again that I hope that we can make meaningful change. When, when what happened to my son happens, I did not come in here demanding that our bus company be fired. Never, ever, ever have I said that. I've said that I want to work in collaboration with everybody for meaningful change. I don't want that to ever happen to a child again. And a lot of the things that are happening are putting these children at risk. They're continuing to put these children at risk. So, there's been numerous opportunities given, and not much is changing. So, I'm not really sure what else I can say at this point. You know, again, I just wanted to come and maybe share a different perspective because at the last meeting, there was no clear answer to exactly how many drivers were short or how many routes are actually being combined. But if you take some time to look through those routes that are on there, it's there. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deanna, Busville, 194 Quinney. I don't usually speak out loud. I'm not here, obviously, it's not a bus forum. However, you phrase it, which is totally preposterous to me. Everyone can speak what they want to speak, but we can't. So.
That is untrue. That's untrue.
Well.
Listen, if you have something you'd like to say, then say it. Don't make accusations against the board. Say what you have to say.
All right. My daughter is a senior, and I have a senior in the school system. So I figured I'd change my approach and speak for all the children on my bus. I am route thirteen and twenty-five and Clintonville Brown bus. I have a perfect attendance record three years in a row. I'm here to support my kids on my bus. It's my route, and those are my kids. When they enter my bus, it's my priority that they're safe. There is nothing that is going to happen to prevent them from not being safe. Okay? So it's disheartening to know that I grew up in this town. I've lived in this town for fifty years, and it's sickening to me that we have to take this kind of abuse and socially. I know it's not your fault.
You're not, first of all, you're not taking it, you're not, I'll give you your time. Don't worry about your time. You're not being abused by anybody. The drivers are all being praised. We are talking about the management of the company. That is putting the company in a bad light. You have to differentiate between what we're saying and what you're thinking. Because what you're thinking is that we are against the bus drivers. And again, we are not against the bus drivers. And that's all you keep saying is that you're taking the brunt. If you're taking the brunt of these issues, you need to speak to your management, who is having difficulty dealing with what our needs are.
Right, and I didn't say you.
I didn't, I wasn't talking for me. You're talking for the children. I'm talking for the board.
Oh, I'm talking for my kids, and this is the next part that I would like to address, is the fact that the school buses are running extremely late because of the nightmare on Elm Street. So I think that it would be great, okay? Because I am a devil. I fine-tuned my run to work with my kids in my area, okay?
Okay.
I have it running like a fine-oil machine, okay? I am SD. Amanda talks about me all the time. I'm not here for accolades. I'm here to make sure my kids get to school on time. When I do my run efficiently and get to Elm Street, okay? And I have to wait on Elm Street for ten minutes after I try to be on time and get to those kids to school at twenty after. They've got tests. They've got to get themselves from the sidewalk all the way into the school. They've got a lot of things to do. I see the cops just sitting in their cars, doing absolutely nothing. I'm not here to bash, but if you want us to be, no, don't interrupt me, please.
It sounded it.
Don't interrupt me.
It sounded it.
Please.
It sounded it.
Okay, let me finish, because I've been listening, and I've been watching these meetings. And honestly, it's a little hard to take.
If you were watching, then you would have heard everybody talking about how good you're doing. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for your time.
I'm very thankful.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're being very rude.
Anna, Anna.
No, I want to address the way that you're responding.
I'm not going to have a conversation with two people. Anna, I'm not having a conversation with you. I'm not having, listen, Anna, I'm not having a conversation with you. All I'm saying is this. We have praised the bus drivers.
I'm not talking about praise.
And-
I'm not talking about praise. I'm talking about.
And we have said that they are not the issue.
I'm over it. I'm over it.
Well, then, uh, but you're talking about the driving.
You need to have an exit strategy and an arrival strategy at the high school that works efficiently.
Right.
So we can efficiently do our job.
So if that's the case, then, then M and J, the representative from M and J should ask us that.
You understand?
If that's the issue, they should ask us that, and we can work on it.
We have asked.
He has not.
Excuse me?
He has not. You may have asked him.
I have asked the school. I have asked the school. I do the mail.
We only, we only deal with the representative.
Solution to this problem that has been going on all year, last year, this year, is that we talked to the security guards at the high school to let them know that it's not working. And they said, okay, we'll see what we can do. By the graces of God, the nice security guy, the direct, the, the traffic director is back from his surgery, and things are working perfectly. The, the thing is, is that when we need support, we have to fight. We have to fight. You need to look at the parking. You need to look at the students, drivers that are going over the parking lot, the, the curbs to cut off our school buses when we're trying to exit the building. Then our buses that are loaded with sixty kids that I have, and I have to wait, my kids are three to a seat, they're crowded, and thank God I have good kids, because I care, okay? I don't move the bus until they're seated. I know what to do. Our training is perfect. It upsets me when I have to deal with the traffic and the students cutting off our school buses. My bus can't stop as quick as a car. So I'm going to bring this to your attention. When our school buses hit a parent or a student in the parking lot, because they cut us off on numerous occasions, and if the Board of Ed hears our conversations on the radio, which I hope you do, because that's our support, and that's the way, well, I wish you did, because it would be a lot more helpful, because you would know what we go through. We want to be as safe and sufficient as possible. And it's a daily struggle. And it's not fair to our children, especially in the hot days, that those hot days were horrid. My kids were sweating. And I've got all these kids, and I have to wait in traffic, and I have to wait to get out of the high school, because the first day of the school, there was nobody there.
I've, I've already mentioned to the other driver that was first here, that we understand your job is difficult, and we never, we never said it wasn't difficult, and we completely understand that.
I'm on your side.
But there are things that are out, there are things that are, there are things that are outside of our control that management has to deal with. The problem is that management, there's a miscommunication between what you're telling management, what management is telling us, or what management needs to tell us. That's the crux of the situation. It's not the drivers. We've said it endlessly. It's not the drivers.
I'm talking about the traffic at the high school.
Whether it's the traffic at the high school or not, if you're telling your management, then management needs to tell us.
Needs to be looked at, because if somebody gets it.
Thank you.
So I don't know who's going to hear, but now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else? We're moving on. The consent agenda. Yeah. Uh, the retirement of Gail Archeola. I know that. Administrative assistant in Green Acres Elementary School. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Negative, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, so being a, a parent at, um, from Green Acres, Mrs. Archeola is amazing. Uh, I can tell you, and I'll tell you just a quick personal story about how wonderful she is. Aside from the fact that she knows every kid's name in the school, she knows every parent who walks to the door. She picks up the phone. She knows who you are automatically. She knows everybody and everything about that school, and makes it such a welcoming place. When our kids first went to Green Acres, I was, being a mom, very, very nervous about my, my daughter transitioning to that school, whatever. And, um, she, she literally called me at the end of the day, of her first day, and was like, she did okay. You don't have to worry. So, uh, we're going to miss her so much. I was like, no. But she was retiring. So, thank you, Mrs. Archeola, if you're watching.
Yeah, I, I, I really, Aleni said everything I could say. You know, I've, I've been lucky enough to have kids go through that school. My youngest daughter still has a year and three quarters left, but we've been there for like ten years. I've known her for a long time. This, you know, we, we've had a lot of people, years I've been on the board, that are good teachers, and people that leave. This, this one kind of breaks my heart, really. She is just, you know, Christian, you know, I, I know I've talked to Lori about this. Anyone who's ever been in Green Acres knows Gail and just how wide-open and friendly and loving she is. She cares about everybody who comes in there, from students to parents, to grandparents. Lenny said she knows everybody. It's, you know, it's just, it's a tough loss for the district, and I just wanted to say thank you to her for everything she's done.
Okay, negative. All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
So, thank you. Okay, our student report, uh, Sarah McCarthy. Hi, Sarah. Um, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, and then you can give your report?
Hi, I'm Sarah McCarthy. I'm a senior at North Haven High School, and here's the report. The midpoint of the marking period, Lord, has recently passed, and things are going well. The marking period ends on November second, two thousand and twenty. The open house at North Haven High School was held on September nineteenth, and was a positive event. Period conference nights are on November first and sixth, by appointment. The portal for parents to schedule their appointments opened on October eleventh and closed on October twenty-fifth. English teacher Peter Zagnella had a book of poetry entitled Coming to Terms, published by Capex's Northwest Press. I probably wrote that summary. And has signed copies for the school library. And all four North Haven grades chose their class officers in a lecture held a week or so ago. These officers will now set to work planning events for their class.
So, Seth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And I know, oh, I know you got here a little late, but.
Sorry.
I was, I don't, no, that's not a problem at all. Believe me, thank you for showing up. I was telling, uh, Joseph that you guys don't have to stay for the entire meeting. So if you come in, you do your report, you want to leave, you have, I know you have sports and homework and a thousand other things that you're more than welcome to come and go. Okay, um, I need to make a motion, excuse me, to ratify the contract between the North Haven Board of Education and the North Haven School Administrators Association.
So moved.
Negative, second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Okay, now we move on to the report on standing committees. And Marty? Anything from ACES?
For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, they come, came up with fifteen goals for the administrator to match, and he's very well endowed with that. Excuse me. Uh, they went over the plans for Bassett Street. And, uh, they're hoping to have most of the work done on that completed by, uh, this coming summer. They're on budget. Uh, they're working with the contractors, and they think that they should go according to plan. They are also looking at some fundraisers for the coming year. And they're doing some changes to their internal budgets. As far as their budget, um, their budget is up to date, and they don't see any financial problems.
Thanks, Marty. Uh, curriculum instruction and planning?
Yeah, so we have met twice since the last board meeting. The first was on September twenty-eighth, and Dr. Dalai presented, um, pardon me, Dr. Dalai presented to the committee on, uh, data elements and challenges that affect the ranking of our school system, included SAT exams, AP courses, uh, what's included in the media surveys that determine ranking. We had an open discussion with Dr. Dalai and his team regarding these ideas, uh, these items and ideas on how to best address, pardon me, how to best address them and to, uh, market our, all the things that North Haven offers. We had a new, we had a new club, uh, that we approved called Save the Children Club at North Haven High School. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And then we met tonight before the meeting. Um, there were a bunch of field trip proposals that, uh, that were out, they're over, out of state overnight. That's, you see, those are all action items for the board. And there was a new Dungeons and Dragons club that was approved from the middle school.
Awesome. That's it? Yep. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Art Department's Photography Field Trip to New York City on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three? Set.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. May I have a motion to approve North Haven High School Boys Basketball Team's Field Trip to New Mission High School in Hyde Park, Massachusetts on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School US History Class Field Trip to New York City on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Music Department's Field Trip to Six Flags New England on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Culinary Program's Field Trip to Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four to April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved. Second.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You know, Randy, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Economics Class Field Trip to the Federal Reserve in New York City on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Fashion Design and Fashion Merchandising Class Field Trip to the Garment District in the Fashion Institute of Technology Museum in New York City on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
North Haven Education Foundation.
Thank you. So the Ed Foundation met yesterday. Uh, they reviewed a few new grant submissions, as well as, uh, discussed different ways to support the, uh, four elementary schools. Uh, the board is also placing their final touches on their trivia night, which is scheduled for Friday, November third. And you can register your team on the foundation's website. Uh, and there's also a link on, on the district website, uh, that you could register as well. Thank you.
Okay, we have first read of the following policies coming up. Educational stability procedure for transportation coordination with the Department of Children and Families, series five thousand students. Family medical leave, series four thousand personnel. Non-discrimination, series one thousand, community board operations. Non-discrimination, series four thousand personnel. Non-discrimination, series five thousand students. Policy regarding Title Nine of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment, series five thousand students. Student discipline, series five thousand students. So first read-through this month. Next month will be the second read-through, and then we'll see if there's any revisions in December. Ad hoc athletic committee?
Our, well, we met, we met once, and we were supposed to meet a second time, but that was, um, that had to be rescheduled. We're waiting on that second date.
Right, I think we have it out now for, to kind of get it together.
Yeah.
Here, okay, great. Superintendent's report?
Thank you.
Let's start with this right here?
Yes.
Start with the, hey, so the DEIB report.
So, uh, the DEIB, um, team will meet tomorrow morning, and we'll be able to report back out, um, at next month's meeting.
Okay, so you have, you have a much better, uh, you have a, all more, all this things for next month, after tomorrow's meeting?
Correct. Thank you.
Good, let's, yeah, uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just a few updates, uh, tonight. Uh, one regarding kindergarten. Uh, so beginning July first in, of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, in order to enroll a child into kindergarten, a child must have turned five years old on or before September first of the school year. Now, this is a change from where we currently stand. Uh, also effective July one, two thousand and twenty-four, a child who is not five years old, on or before September one of the school year, may be admitted to kindergarten under the following conditions. Uh, upon written requests by the child's parent or legal guardian to the school principal, and after the principal and appropriate certified staff member conduct an assessment of the child to ensure that admitting the child to kindergarten is developmentally appropriate. So this information, uh, has been talked about for a while now. We're still waiting on some guidance, uh, from the state, actually from CAPS as well. I know that, uh, CAPS and, uh, the Commissioner of Education reportedly met at the end of September to discuss some of the issues around this. Uh, they do not expect the uniformed assessment, uh, for children younger than age five to come from the state. Uh, supers have also shared a concern for families around the cost of childcare, and for districts who do not have space or funding to create a, like, a preschool program for the students who do not meet that cutoff. Uh, I'm hoping for additional guidance in the next few months. I will continue to keep the board and the community updated around, uh, these guidelines. Traditionally, just so the board is, uh, aware, we open kindergarten registration around Martin Luther King Day. So we do have some time, hopefully, to get some things, uh, in order before that time.
So Patrick, the way I understand this is that, um, the state is telling us that we can allow each elementary school principal to pretty much make the decision themselves.
That's what statutes is.
So, so we could essentially have four elementary schools that have different guidelines based on admission?
We could, but we would uniform them as a district, and a board would approve that before we ever did.
That's exactly where I was going, because I don't want to put that on our administration, and I want to be consistent throughout the district. But, thank you.
So when the state says it's up to the school, do they have, like, a standard, like, developmental checklist? Or is it, like, notice made slightly worse?
We'd have to develop and present to the board prior to, um, enacting that.
Okay, and then I have another question. Do we know, because there, I mean, there are parents who will, even before the law, right, will opt to hold their kid back a year if their birthday is September and on, even sometimes in August. Um, do we foresee this changing our numbers a lot for kindergarten, or do we think it'll be similar?
So.
Does that make sense, my question?
Yes, and actually, Christian and, uh, our data specialist, along with, uh, Jen K, have been digging into the past five years, did we look at, to see the, the numbers of students that are, um, younger than September first, to see those number of kids. Um, so we'll present that, uh, upcoming soon.
Thank you. And are we including the elementary principals in all of those conversations? Thank you.
So Patrick, just for clarity, so when, um, Aleni asks, we will develop, we as in the district? Or, or, because nothing is coming from the state?
That's what we've heard so far, yes.
Okay. All right, so that's one.
And that's an option. The, 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 the board and the district does not have to go in that direction either.
Okay. The other question is, um, just thinking about understanding that, that some of these children are not, were not in any pre-K or early childhood education, how do we make sure that they are not, um, that they're included in, you know, being matriculated into the school, just in, just in, I, I don't want the guidelines to stop the children from being able to matriculate into our schools because of, you know, whether it's the pandemic or whatever happened prior. I just want to, just want to be mindful of that.
It, it should not be exclusionary.
Right.
The guidelines or the, the criteria we put together. I understand. I agree. I just have a few more things?
Sure.
Okay. Um, North Haven High School will be hosting a What North Haven Has to Offer night on Monday, November sixth. Uh, this is, this event is intended for eighth-grade students, or really any middle school students and their families to tour the school and hear about the, uh, courses and programs offered. And I just want to provide, uh, an update on our intensive learning services. Uh, it's one of the district programs we have at Ridge Road, the Middle It's one of the district programs we have at Ridge Road, the middle school and the high school. And my update really focuses on the, the program at Ridge Road. So ILS is a service that students utilize who have intellectual disabilities, potentially autism from across the district. The program continues to grow in size and as we know, space is at a premium at the elementary level. As a result, Anthony and I are beginning to develop a plan to relocate the elementary ILS program from Ridge Road to Clintonville simply because they do have the space to hold the program. This change would not happen until the start of next year, so we want to get a really good jump on it being in October. We have the full year to look at this. Obviously, there are many layers to this work and we'll take some time to flesh out each component. But I did want to bring it to the board tonight. We have our first meeting on Monday. Anthony, myself, Ms. DeAngelo, Mr. McLaughlin, a couple other special education representatives to begin this discussion. So I'll continue to update the board and you can expect a presentation in a few months. And just for next month, Melinda and I will have an Sback, NGSS and SAT presentation prepared for the board. I didn't want Amanda, Marty or Marie to miss out on that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question to the, the night at the high school? Do we know what time, did you say what time and I missed that?
I think Russ said to me six to seven.
Okay. And there'll be a blast that goes out?
Yeah.
To eighth grade parents?
I think it might initially go to eighth and he'll send it to me and I'll have Lori send it out to six and seven too, if they're interested.
Awesome.
Thanks, Mel.
Thank you for.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Assistant Superintendent's report?
I have some slides up here and one is, I know we've been talking about our Certified Nursing Assistant Course that we implemented at the beginning of this school year. And it is finally in full swing at the high school. And we have fourteen students. The Department of Health sets a guideline of a one to fifteen teacher ratio. So we are almost maxed out, which is so exciting. And all of our equipment has finally arrived. So that's what I wanted to show you, there are hospital beds and all of the opportunities for students.
That's here?
It's here at the high school, yes.
The simulator too?
Everything that's there, yes.
Wow.
And on November eighth, they are going to begin their clinical sessions, which will be at Montwies Health and Rehab. So the first day will be an orientation for our students and a tour and we are off and running. So it's a really great opportunity. As our student rep Joe had mentioned, October is Manufacturing Month and the high school is celebrating by partnering with the Greater New Haven Chamber of Commerce, as he had mentioned. And there will be opportunities during Block Two for students to come and hear from local leaders in engineering and manufacturing. And we are very fortunate because Ann Benowitz, one of our community members, is a lead at the New Haven Chamber of Commerce. So she has really partnered with us and is opening a lot of opportunities for our students. And lastly, I had the pleasure today of spending the day in Hartford at the Convention Center where our district science work was highlighted. Paris Godbout, our science coordinator, and Matt Smith, one of our middle school science teachers, led a breakout session for participants, talking about some of the steps we've taken over the past couple of years to increase our science opportunities. And I can't thank our teachers and both of them for all that they have done to really make our opportunities so engaging and to embed the next generation science standards. And we're really seeing the benefits with our students. That's all I have tonight.
I just want to say this is super exciting in terms of the diversity of opportunities for our North Haven students. So whichever route they want to go, to know that they can do it here.
It's kind of cool just to give them opportunities and to try out different things.
Absolutely.
Melinda, the CNA course, is that just one course trying to expand interest in possibly going into that field?
So that one will, students will get CNA certification at the completion of it. It's the entire year with the, yeah, with the practicum and all of that. We also do have some health pass, pathway course routes as well. So we're really trying to open up a lot of opportunities for our students.
That CNA thing is actually good because if they move on to college, they can use it as a side opportunity while they're going to college to make good money.
That's right.
To pay for college.
Exactly. We, we spent a lot of time, certainly last year and a little bit the year before at CNI, talking about the advantages of the program and, and doing a little bit of research and finding out that many students, some as a career path, may want that as their career path. But then for many others, exactly what you said, it's an opportunity in the summer and during college while they're studying for medical careers of some nature, to be able to have some income and some experience.
It could also count for hours.
Yes.
Like.
Clinical hours, I know.
For, so, because some health majors will require a certain number of clinical hours and CNA hours usually count for.
Oh, okay.
So it's really cool.
Right, and I do know many of the nursing programs do require you to have a CNA certification. So I think it's a nice advantage for our students.
That, excellent job, that's amazing. That was really cool.
You saw the man, I'm excited.
The simulator. We were so excited when the hospital beds finally got here and then got put together. It's, it's been a process, so.
Anything else?
I'm all set.
Editor-in-chief of Student Services report?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you again for giving me the time to speak this evening. I just wanted to provide some clarity from last board's meeting in regards to multiple questions that were raised around families' obligations to pay the co-pays for their children's school-based health services. So as a community-based outside agency unaffiliated with the school district, these services do provide additional support to our students in the community. Co-pays and service fees are directly correlated to families' individual insurance policies. The letter sent by the school-based health further explained the services that will be tied back to family insurance policies, which in some circumstances might include a co-pay. Families are encouraged to connect with their child's clinician if there's any concerns or they need support. We, of course, will continue to offer all of our school-based mental health services, our social workers, school psychologists, and then at the middle and the high school, our school counselors, which will not be impacted whatsoever by insurance. So just a little update on that piece of it. I'd also like to spend a couple moments on highlighting some of the special education budget lines. Student environment and special education needs are very fluid. This school year, we had a number of new student registrations that came into North Haven from other districts who had their students enrolled in out-of-district placement schools. So after very close review, we determined that their placements at their out-of-district schools were very most appropriate for their least restrictive environment and for their current learning needs. These additional costs of these services are around three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars out of our special ed tuition budget line that was not included in our operating budget. I will be completing the excess cost grant in the future months to come to help offset that high cost for the students. In completing rough calculations, the tuition amount and transportation should hit the threshold of about seventy percent of the reimbursement of the total cost. So I will definitely provide more information on that. And then another line item which currently shows a negative amount is the professional and technical services line. This line item sounds like it should belong to our technology department. However, it is a line directly for support for our students, which include Apex Services. Apex is a company that we contract with and they deliver direct support to students with learning differences and challenges that require certified registered behavior technicians, so RBTs, along with supervision from BCBA, which is a board-certified behavioral analyst. These services are connected directly to two of our programs, which included, as Mr. Stirk had mentioned earlier, our ILS Intensive Learning Program at all levels and also our TLS program, which is our therapeutic learning service program at all levels. This year, we had to hire an additional two RBT staff members to support new student transfers. This was an additional one hundred and one thousand, six hundred dollars that was not included in the operating budget. This line item is currently in the negative at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, which includes these two additional RBTs, as well as further consultation and support for students enrolled in these particular programs. And again, I can apply most of that to the, the seventy percent reimbursement. We're hoping that, that high cost will hit that reimbursement need for our students. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Editor-in-chief of Chief Operating Officer?
Thank you very much. In my report this evening, I'm just going to share out the fact that currently with our financials that I've shared with PAC at this evening, we continue to move on course with where we should be overall budgetarily. In examining our current financial reports, you'll see a couple items. Anthony just spoke to one, which is the technical services. So I'm not going to go over that again, why that is currently over budget. You all, you would see in our report line one, one, two, R, this is reimbursable wages. It's currently in the negative, this is effectively our, the preschool program is housed at our high school. Once we get the tuition back, that line item then comes back in. So we just have to pay their wages first, the tuition comes in, that account line is then taken care of there. The other line item that we have not addressed yet is the line five ones, five one zero C. This is special education transportation. The reason that is currently overfunded right now is we did receive a bill in July, that's really our, our summer school transportation, that hit that particular account line and currently is throwing that off, so we're taking a look at that particular account line as well. Some other operational items I'd like to share with you, following the September fourteenth Board of Education meeting and the subsequent September twentieth Board of Finance meeting, we got right to work. Mr. Chair, Board Chairman, Mr. Ronald Bathrick, Mr. Stirk, Director of Facilities, Mr. Phil Diana, myself already sat down, started looking at those items and lining them up in an effort to make sure that we were very transparent with those projects that we outlined in that non-lapsing account. Some of them have already been put into motion. For example, Director of Technology, Ms. Jen Kozniewski, has already ordered the panels for the eighty-five thousand dollar piece of that non-lapsing. And that is actually looking to come under slightly under budget there, as well as fencing for the Montwies ramp. That, actually that PO came in this morning. So we're already underway and we want to keep that as transparent as possible for everyone. As mentioned earlier, Superintendent Stirk, myself and Anthony, we do continue to meet weekly with M&amp;J Transportation in an effort to both address direct concerns from our community as well as offer recommendations on how to improve our work in collaboration with them to improve it for our families and our community members. I would like to share from our cafeteria and food services, between the last meeting and this meeting, the Connecticut State Department of Education released its grant awards for the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistant Program. This is something we applied for back in the spring. And we actually were awarded a grant for fifty thousand dollars that was specifically targeted for a new walk-in cooler at Green Acres Elementary School. So we are working with Mr. Sal Rizzo, Mr. Diana and myself in an effort to get that moving as quickly as possible to replace that, have a new walk-in cooler at Green Acres. In terms of our food services report, September overall, we did quite well. We are in the, the plus there in terms of our overall lunches. Breakfast is tend to be obviously very robust in the amount of breakfast we serve and that is because breakfast is free for all those who wish to, to come and take that. With that being said, to conclude my report, we continue to use grants in an effort to supplement our operating budget. And next, at the next board meeting, I will have a five-year history that outlines state and federal grants that we've received over the past five years.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Is that fifty thousand cover the walk-in cooler?
We'll have to go out to, to bid, but between that and what we would likely have in our cafeteria funds, we're going to be able to, to get it done.
Wasn't it seven grand? Clintonville, just. The one we did in Clintonville last year was like seventy. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's the same.
Yeah.
But I'm, just for reference, just for reference.
I think a landing house.
I have, it's kind of a random question. If something at a school breaks or runs out or like a printer or something like that, is there, like, and I should know the answer, so forgive me. Is there money allocated for like those one-offs for each school? Like if something breaks, they can replace it?
Like a repair line?
Right, right away sort of thing? Okay.
We do have a printer and copier contracted with Canon, so they do come up.
And they can fix all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay. Have we heard from teachers that there's a shortage of supplies of anything or that they need anything? Or now that the school year has started?
I have not heard that. Supply line counts, you know, follow on track with where we were, what has been requested. And we are seeing the requisitions coming through on a daily basis for those items to be approved and get them to the buildings as quickly as possible.
Perfect. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move, thank you. We move on to the public comment section of any agenda item. Who would like to speak on that?
Just wanted to, Michelle Guoemo again. Just wanted to ask a question for you about the school-based health counseling that you just talked about.
Sure.
Because I did receive the letter and both of my children have taken advantage of those services for a long time. When they say things like, you know, if you have concerns or you have issues, reach out to them, does that mean that somehow those co-pays and deductibles are going to be taken care of? Or is there going to be some sort of like income guidelines that they want to see? Like I don't know who's been picking up those co-pays or deductibles for the past few years because they haven't been passed on to families. And someone like me in a two-teacher household, like we never qualify for any sort of, you know, income-based help, but we still struggle to buy groceries every week and, and everything else. So I just kind of wanted to know what the process is going to be like or if there is a process and those co-pays will go away, if you're willing to answer that.
Sure, I can share a little information. I met with Kate Trofider, she is the regional supervisor for the school-based health program. And she shared that for any families that insurance is being hit by the co-pay piece of it, that there is a program that you can access and that information was provided in the letter. And basically it's a sliding scale, that is an opportunity that they provide. But if that is something that families still are unable to afford, they're willing to work with families on an individual basis. So because it's not a direct school-related piece, I can't give you the exact answer, but I'd be happy to connect you with her and anyone in the community to try and get some more support on that case.
Yes, I can reach out to Ms. Kate, she's awesome.
She is wonderful.
Very familiar with Ms. Kate, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adjourn the October twelve, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May you adjourn?
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.